Good evening. It's 6:30 PM on Monday, November the 25th, 2019. And I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please turn your cellphones to silence and please rise with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the room?
Mrs. Kuhn.
Present.
Mrs. Ruggles.
Present.
Mr. Birdy.
Dr. Culetti.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present. Just as a reminder, all of the work that we do follows the SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, achievable, and relevant, and time-sensitive, that has been established within the district, which includes the student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement. Now, our first item on the agenda tonight is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. And as I make my way to the podium, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Okay, I will...
You want to read the safety thing first?
No, no, I'll read the first selection.
Oh, okay.
I was going to give you a chance to...
As I'm making my way over.
Get there. I could have read slow or I could have read fast. The first recipient is, is Kayden Delaney here? Kayden, I knew it was you when I saw you. I knew it was you. All right, come on up to the podium, sir. So, do you know Mr. Holman Kayden? Okay, all right. So this is what Mr. Holden writes about Kayden. Kayden Delaney is the perfect choice for a student who shows that character, that character counts. He completely encompasses Winton Woods Elementary School's motto of trust, respect, and responsibility. Kayden was the first student of the month for our class in September. He was chosen for his willingness to help others, whether asked or not, and for being a wonderful friend to everyone in his class. He is very respectful to everyone, whether they are fellow students, another teacher in the building, or someone who oversees lunch and recess duty. He comes into class every day greeting me with a smile, and he leaves every day giving me a hug. Wow, I need him on my team. His positive energy can be contagious, and I truly feel that he is a treasure to our class. He likes to make sure that his friends, classmates, and teachers are being treated fairly and respectfully. Kayden is truly a child who proves that character counts. Where, where's his family? You guys have to be proud. Absolutely. So that's written by Mr. Holman, the principal, Winton Woods Elementary School. And I'd like to say something. My, my, my great colleague, Mr. Denny, Mr. Denny, raise your hand. Mr. Denny had many letters written from his principal, but they were nothing like this. So, just want to just add that. So, Kayden's family, come on up for the photo.
Yes, come on up, take the picture. So then turn around to Mr. Drew right there, and then we're going to get your family in there.
Amazing. So before you sit down, I'm not trying to create a storm, but are you guys triplets?
No.
I'm the mother, these are two boys.
Okay, all right, I'm just checking. So, someone needs to tell us where he gets that great character from. Who can, who can do that at the mic?
Well, um, oh my gosh. Well, Kayden, he's always been a good little boy. We try our best to, you know, reinforce good, um, character, and, um, he just, it's just natural, it just comes natural for him.
Awesome, uh, thank you. Well, I can tell you, little boys grow up to be great men. So, congratulations. Fantastic. Kayden, you want to say anything? Our next recipient for student of the month is Taylor Fields. So before I read this, this great letter from Mr. John Beishel, where, where's this, where's Taylor's family? Okay. Mom and dad, I have to tell you, I, I come to the school often, and he is always doing the right thing. Every time, all the time. And you will be very, very proud of how he carries himself in the school. Sometimes people can put it on when people are around, but he's doing it all the time. And so I think you guys have instilled some incredible skills in him. All right? So, dear admission scholarship committee, I enthusiastically recommend Taylor Fields to you for admission and scholarship consideration. Taylor is one of the outstanding seniors in the class of 2020 at Winton Woods High School. Taylor stands out amidst his peers based on his personal integrity, character, and his work ethic. Taylor has shown over the course of four years that he is self-disciplined, focused, and always prepared. Taylor is active in a variety of activities, both in school and in the community. He has diverse interests academically, athletically, as well as a commitment to the service of others. It especially fascinates me that he has been involved for four years in Latino ministries, and no one at Winton Woods was aware until he happened to mention it casually this year. Taylor mentioned that it was a chance encounter four years ago that led him to this involvement, and he has found the experience fulfilling. Taylor also surprisingly does all of these activities, you can see the list in his profile, and amazingly also finds time to work. This displays organizational and time management that will benefit Taylor both in college and beyond. Taylor displays an exceptional work ethic along with a passion for education. He comes to school every day, comes to pair, and his teachers speak of his classroom engagement. Winton Woods is a PBL school, and as such, we expect every student to be involved in group projects and take leadership. Taylor embraces this involvement and regularly displays leadership in class. Taylor's leadership is on further display in leadership initiatives such as Project Inspire, Rites of Passage, and Super Saturday Teen Leadership Program. All of these activities that Taylor has pursued on his own and not part of any requirements for any service. Taylor has shown initiatives in academics, in-service activities, and leadership. Based upon these, my interact with him, I recommend him enthusiastically. Please can contact me if you have any further questions. That's John Beishel, the counselor for families with last names of A to K. Congratulations, sir.
Want to bring us up here for a picture?
Oh, we're doing wardrobes now, okay. All right, Taylor.
Want you to say a few words?
Yes.
Wow. It's a big honor for, uh, thanks. Um, let's say it's an honor to receive this award. I know very few people actually get it throughout the school year. As we're only in school around eight or nine months, so I'm like one of the eight or nine people to actually get it. Basically, everything that Mr. Smith said about me, and I know we were reading from Mr. Beishel's report, that yes, it's all true. I devote myself, I devote myself entirely to the community, and basically, I love helping people out. I love, you know, getting the chance to serve the community and getting my time to also find work between. I know that takes a lot of skill and a lot of time management, and I'm able to do it, I'm able to balance a heavy schedule. And I just want to say thanks from, it's an honor to receive it. I want to give you all thanks and, thanks, give you the blessings.
Very good. Thank you. Our next award recipient is Emmy Gito. She's not here tonight, so we will schedule her for next month. This, this next award is just awesome, because when you have, um, great students, you have to have great teachers. And I think I'm skipping someone. Oh, no, that's it. So I'd like to have Mrs. Gibbling come up. And when we sent the notice out, I have to go back and check my email. Mr. Gibbling sent me an email saying, "Oh, is it me?" No, sir, it's your wife, it's not you. Okay, you did not get the award, sir. Sorry, maybe next time. Okay. But every time that you see Ms. Gibbling, she has a smile on her face, she's energetic, she's enthusiastic, she loves children, and she's always trying to work through any obstacles that we may have in conjunction with Winton Woods City Schools. So I am proud to see you standing up and being recognized for your hard work. And I know that your humble approach, you really don't want to be up there, but you are there. So this is what Mr. Sanker, Mr. Sanker, are you here tonight? This is what he writes about Ms. Gibbling. Ms. Gibbling is a veteran teacher whose positive leadership and dedication extend far beyond her classroom. This year alone, she's used her creativity to collaborate on course offerings and programs tailored specifically towards newcomer English learners, co-lead professional development on positive behavior interventions and supports. Contributed to a school-wide response to intervention program and is part of our equity team. She has excellent relationships with both staff and students, which is evident in the way she is able to motivate both groups in being the best WWMS warrior possible. Ms. Gibbling is also an excellent communicator in multiple languages. She makes herself available to help translate academic materials, parent contacts, and a variety of other needs and requests. We at Winton Woods Middle Schools are incredibly proud to have Ms. Gibbling as part of our Warrior Team. So in order to be nominated, these are the attributes that you had to have in character traits. Excellence in the classroom by using instructional practices to support higher academic achievement. Motivation by encouraging and motivating students to surpass their expectations, both academically and socially. Leadership by having a positive attitude with parents, students, colleagues, and the community. Creativity by demonstrating creativity in teaching in all ways that inspire students to learn. Dedication by showing excellent attendance, punctuality, and overall dependability. And finally, communication by communicating effectively to their classroom, parents, colleagues, and beyond. The Skyline Teacher of the Month Award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools. Thank you, Ms. Gibbling.
Thank you.
Yeah, my family.
Congratulations.
Mr. Sanker's trying to get off taking a picture.
Our final recipient is, goes to an incredible guy, Mr. Andre Parker. Come up to the podium, please. Again, as I mentioned about Taylor, there are some incredible things about Mr. Parker. I was in a local establishment barber shop several months ago, and there was a young man who had his back turned and he was getting his hair cut. And we had recently found out, well, actually it was last month, we recently found out that we didn't make it to the playoffs. And we were sad behind it, of course, because that's some of our energy that we put into the, the program. And the young man said something that was so prolific, he says, "He didn't see me." He says, "Coach Parker says we're more than just football. We have a whole lot of other attributes, and Winton Woods City Schools is a great place to be." When you can hear something from a, from a student, and he can't see you, and he talks about how positive his interaction with, is with another adult, that tells us that we're doing the right thing at the right time for the right people. And when he turned around and he saw me, he says, "Do I know you?" And I said, "No, sir, you do not." All right? Yeah, no, I, no, I told him, we didn't know each other. But I've heard other people talk about, um, Mr. Andre Parker. And again, he is more than a coach. He is a relationship builder, and I think those attributes makes us say that you are definitely our community spirit recipient of the month. Thank you, sir.
I would like to just thank the school board superintendent, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Denny. I still remember a long, long time ago when you hired me. So, for a job in the building, had nothing to do with football. So, um, it means a lot to me. I went here, my mother went here, all my children go here. I've had one graduate, I have another graduate next year, so, thank you.
Family members, come on up. Very good.
Very good. Thank you all so much for all that you do for the Winton Woods City School District. Thank you Superintendent Smith, and congratulations to our students and to our teacher and to our administrator, um, who have received the recognition awards today. We appreciate your commitment to the district and to your dedication. I can speak from experience when I say that, um, Mr. Parker made a great impression on my son, who graduated in 2015, and he still talks about you often. So, and I know you weren't easy on him, but he does talk about you often, in a positive way, in a very positive way. And I think he came back to visit you a couple of times. He said, "I went up to, he says, "But I'm not going to take up any of his time, because his time belongs to the students that he has now." And I think he recognizes that, that what the impact that you had for him, he wants you to be able to have that same impact on the young men that you work with or the students that you work with. So, um, we do appreciate what you do. Just for a few minutes here before we go on our recess, I would like to give Mr. Smith some space to read, um, about, uh, safety plan and protocol that we have, uh, that is coming on board. So, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
So I know several people we've read in the newspaper and seen on TV about, um, uh, people abducting children, and it is widespread nationwide. And so I'd like to read a protocol that I sent to the Warrior families today, and that means all families in the district. It says, "Dear Warrior families, it has come to our attention that there are many, there may be safety issues in our community where the targeted audience is our children. We know that our law enforcement teams are well aware of these issues and remain steadfast and confident to make sure that we are all safe and conscientious. We would like to add additional safety precautionary measures that may aid law enforcement in making our community a safe place to live, work, and play." So here are some pieces to the puzzle for parents and also students. After events and activities which include practices, plays, concerts, and/or athletic events, please make sure that your child knows the pickup point. Two, if you're running behind schedule or the plans may have changed, please let your child know immediately. Three, in the event that, that an activity may last longer than anticipated, i.e. overtime, please encourage your child to communicate with you to inform you of the new estimated time of completion. Four, openly discuss with your child to never leave an event early or alone without parental guardianship or permission. Next, remember, riding with people that you may not know should be restricted. And finally, please make sure that your child does not stray from the original activity, for example, taking a detour, no matter how slight it seems to be. These are a few precautionary measures that we can follow in order to make our communities remain safe and enjoyable places to live. Please take time out of your demanding schedule to update safety plans with your child. Above all, have a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you for sending your child to Winton Woods City Schools, a culturally diverse district of destination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate those precautions that the district is taking in light of some of the things that are going on in our communities around right now. We'll take a five-minute recess now, um, and we'll come back in five minutes. We now resume the, uh, regular board meeting, and the next item on our agenda is 4.01, which is public comments, and I don't see that we have any public comments, so I'll move right on to 5.01, which is the Winton Woods Teachers Association representative. Do we have a representative from the WWTA tonight? Okay, we do not, so we'll just move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 5.02, which is the Ohio, um, Association for Public School Employees, and we do have Mrs. Shonda Ferguson Gordon with us tonight. You have the podium.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Mr. Smith, administrative staff, and guests. Um, OT, just want to say thank you for acknowledging us, and we would like to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And we always appreciate your treats that you give us. Thank you so much.
It's Thanksgiving, we got a turkey sandwich or something.
Hey, what, no, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a mo, a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. We get it out. Uh, the next item on our agenda is 7.01, the treasurer's report for the financial statements for October 2019. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, uh, general fund revenues for the month of October and the year to, month of October were 2.1 million, which is mostly our state foundation. Real estate collections are done until February. Also, our year-to-date revenues in the general fund are 20.8 million. Our expenditures in the general fund year-to-date are at 16.9 million, and we are currently running approximately 1.8 million under budget. Uh, all funds had $85 million, of which 21 million was the general fund, 7 million in the building fund, and approximately 50 million in our classroom facilities. That's basically a summary of the financial report for October.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of October 2019 be submitted to audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, the treasurer's recommendation of investments for October 2019. Back to you, Mr. Seymour.
Yes, for the month of October, we had approximately 94 million invested, of which we earned, um, 169,000, 30, approximately 33,000 in the general fund, and 136,000 for our building funds.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Seymour. Um, board, a motion is in order to approve the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, and the next one. A motion is in order to approve the investments, I'm sorry, for the, um, month of October.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
It's been motioned and seconded. I'm sorry, it's been motioned, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Ruggles, second.
Mrs. Ruggles.
Thank you.
Second it. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, is the resolution to proceed to a levy and additional tax for current operating expense. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, you have before you the resolution to proceed for a current operating, uh, levy for general expenses of 6.95 mils. This is the resolution to proceed. It contains the ballot language, and also, uh, presented is the auditor certification for the value and the amount to be collected.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order to approve the resolution to proceed to a levy and additional tax for the current operating expense.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed to levy an additional tax for the current operating expenses.
I'll second. Do you want to continue reading?
Yeah, please.
I, uh, would you like me to breathe the entire thing? Expenses in excess of the 10 mil limitation as presented. The Hamilton County Auditor has certified that the levy will generate 3,194,034 annually and will cost the owner of a $100,000 home 243 dollars and 25 cents annually. The Hamilton County Auditor's certification is attached.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
If I could, I would like to mention that it will be on the March 17th ballot.
Yes, absolutely.
Twenty, 2020.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the superintendent's school reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, um, so that parents can be aware, um, we have some upcoming, uh, events that are necessary to say that school will not be in session. So there's no school on Conference Day, November 27th. Uh, of course, Thanksgiving break is November 28th and 29th. And the high school was doing something pretty courageous. Uh, there are retakes for the end-of-course exams, because end-of-course exams, of course, are measuring, uh, how well kids perform academically once they've been instructed, so they are retakes that are going to occur. On December 4th, there's the band winter concert, 7 to 9. And Project Success is holding a coat and hat drive on December 4th. And if you are a outdoors person who enjoys the festivities, on December 7th is the Springfield Township Winter Fest Parade, and I believe the Winton Woods High School Band will be one of the featured bands in the, in the, uh, activity. And then on December 11th is the Hallelujah Concert, that's 7 to 8:30. These are, uh, activities that are for this month, but they're for November, December. But please keep in mind, and we'll try to announce it again, uh, the board has, um, been happy to, to hear that the Winton Woods Choir is going to be presenting at, on, at the Pops, and, uh, a great musical display and tribute, and I believe this is how many years in a row? Two years in a row? How many dates is it, Mrs. Denny?
It's three dates, five performances.
Three dates, five performances. Ms. Jackson did a great story with the, uh, Pops conductor, and we wanted to find out exactly why do you keep selecting Winton Woods? And they said, "For their performance, their professionalism, their character, and also, they sound absolutely magnificent." There are so many choirs that they could have selected, but they keep selecting us, so we're very, very proud of our, our work with the Pops. Those are the, uh, highlights for the upcoming school events.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, which are first reads and revised policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, the first is, um, of course, board, remember, these are first reads, and they will come back for a possible vote next month. There is a policy 1310, the employment of the treasurer. There is a policy 1340, the reemployment of the treasurer. There is a 1615, use of tobacco by administrators. There's a 3215, use of tobacco by professional staff. 4215, use of tobacco by classified staff. 5200, suit and attendance. 5230, late arrival and early dismissal for attendance as well. 5460, graduation requirements, and finally, 8500, food services.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Again, he noted that there are a total of nine policies, three that address administrators- three that address administrators, professional, and classified staff, and three that address student issues on attendance, late and early dismissal, and graduation requirements. We might want to pay close attention to the graduation requirements. That'll be for the 2020 students?
Yes.
2020, 2021.
Yeah, we're actually looking at it. We wrote our letter to a resolution to Ohio Department of Education. And it was accepted because we are saying that we wanted it to be based on the cohort. So the cohort that started out with these particular requirements, we wanted them to stay with it. And so the new cohort would fall under a different level.
Right. So that's one of those first reads. There was also an addition to the one that we want to pay attention to with the graduation requirements that added something else that would, I can't remember right now, that involved PE.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
We already did an addition to that. Yeah, show choir.
Show choir is now, the conditions for show choir, because there's so much movement and activity, they're saying that students will be able to receive a waiver for phys ed. But keep in mind, you must be able to participate in show choir two years. Two years in a row in order to accept a waiver. One of the things that I have to say about the high school staff, especially the counseling department, when the waivers have come in and students are not required to take a phys ed course because they've been in a band or on an athletic team, that counseling department asks students to be put in a more rigorous academic class. So you get the waiver, but it's not just so that you can, you know, take it easy. It's giving you the opportunity to be in something more rigorous. And I think that's an attribute to the way the counselors see the young people. You know, you have an opportunity to have a waiver, now take advantage of it.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And as he has stated, these will come back in next month. So we'll look at them again next month for a possible approval. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the facilities update. Mr. Smith, you have the floor. Mr. Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening. Just a quick update on the facilities. They are continuing to proceed on schedule. We are still on budget, so we're thrilled to continue to be able to announce that each month. You can see there's considerable progress evident. You may be noticing fewer external changes at this time, but a lot of the change is going on inside the building. Various systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, framing, those sorts of things. Board, I've handed out a copy of the Weekly Blitz. And I would just remind anyone in the audience tonight and anyone who might be tuning in at home that we do have a copy of this available each week. And it appears on our district website. And it's in the lower right-hand corner. So just a reminder, and there's a lot of other information on this site, including campus timelines for each campus. Some photographs, recent photographs, also a gallery of renderings and things of that nature. So just a reminder that those resources are there. Occasionally, I'll get a question, how do I find out what's going on? This is probably the best place to send people. And one of the things I did want to also point out, I've got some more photos. And I can share with you at this time, the project is about 33% complete. So it's about one-third away with delivery expected on, and turnover expected on February 4th, 2021. As I said, we are still on budget, but we have been utilizing contingency funds. There are various buckets or pots of money, if you will, various funds that are part of the budget that are there to anticipate expenses that might come up, or field conditions, or things that need to be resolved, or even errors or omissions, or things of that nature. And so we have at this time expended about, down to about 40% remaining in our hard contingency. There's also soft contingency, LFI. And then finally, there's the interest dollars that cannot be spent until the end of the project. So we are sitting in a good position as a district, but it's something we just continue to watch. And I wanted to share that with the Board as well. To the end of more photos, I actually have another handout I'll share with you so you can get a little bit better look than perhaps what you're able to see on the screen. But just for our viewers at home and those who have joined us this evening, these are some photos from the project. This was last Thursday. I believe this was last Thursday. Yes. So it's a view of the front of the building. You may start to see the steel V structure in the middle. That is the 912 side or the high school side. We also can see that they've graded inside where the auditorium is. They're ready to pour concrete. They're putting in conduit now, and you actually see that photograph in the Blitz, if you take a look at the Blitz photograph. Also, you can see there's, I mentioned, there's extensive framing using prefab aluminum studs. That's going on inside the building. And then there's masonry viewable from Kemper. This is a view you can actually see from Kemper. That's the arena where our high school, boys and girls will play basketball and many other sports. Also, that was the high school, a look at the 912 side, some 7, 8 photos. You can see cold weather fireproofing going on. We don't stop just because the weather gets cold. They find ways to contain it and keep the heat in and continue to operate. And this is on the middle school side. If you scroll down a bit more, thank you. Also, you can see, that's a look at one of the distributed dining areas where students would go in one door and come out the other. And that photo's actually taken in the middle of the learning stair. It's not constructed yet. And if you scroll down a little more, please. Flipping around to look exactly 180 degrees behind, you can see out the clear store or the floor-to-ceiling glass of the media center at the middle school side. There's also some photos of the K6. And the blue stuff you can see is waterproofing. And then you can see a photo of the learning stairs as it is now, and then the future rendering, sort of now and later. And then just to kind of give some enjoyment, you can see also some more renderings. These are photographs of now on site, and then photographs of what it would look like later in the renderings. So you can see, that's the open gym at the K6, the main gym at the K6, and then one of the collaboration zones, of which there are 12 at the K6 and 12 at the high school. But this is an example of one of them. So you can see how it is now and how it's going to look in about 18 months.
Mr. Denny, I'd like to say thank you for giving us a different perspective. Each month we come, I think it's improving dramatically. But in the past, we were just looking at walls and say, hey, nice brick, looks amazing. And now we can see the parallel of what it actually turns into. Excellent work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Very good. I don't think you want to leave the podium. I'm going to skip from 10.02 down to 10.03, and we'll come back to 10.02. But Mr. Denny is going to present as well with this one. It's 10.03 is the change orders. So Mr. Smith and Mr. Denny, you could move right on into that.
So from time to time, there has to be change orders in order to meet the requirements. And some of those orders, in many cases, are safety requirements that we don't really have any control over. But one of the things that Mr. Denny mentioned is, as far as our contingency, we have not exhausted our contingency. So this project at this particular time is not over budget. So, Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And good evening again, Board. Just to reiterate and echo what Mr. Smith said, we have brought a change order before. It was a big one. That was, you may recall, the GEO peers. Anything in excess over 50,000, which is consistent with our, the Board's current procurement policies, would come before the Board, just as a matter of transparency and consistency. So this is a list of current CDs or change orders, change directives, they're sometimes called. And so I have a more detailed listing I can share with you as well. But this is a summary of the change orders by site. Of course, we have two projects. I would go ahead and read them at this time and then give the dollar amount and a brief description of the reason that these change orders are being requested. The first one is an intrusion detection system, also known as a burglar alarm. This is elective, meaning that as the owner, we would like to purchase this. As Mr. Smith mentioned, this is a safety and security matter for the new buildings. All of our current facilities have a burglar alarm or an intrusion detection system. We wanted to be sure that we didn't step down when we construct new facilities. In addition to that, these are multimillion-dollar assets that have to be protected the best that we can. So an intrusion detection system makes sense. So this is owner requested. It is in the amount of $62,846.99. Also, at the K6, and I'll take a broad brush swipe at this, that when you approve the GMP, that is done at the 75% mark. So you move through the various phases of design. Construction documents is the last phase of design. Comes after developmental design and some of the other conceptual design phases. Since the GMP is done at 75%, there's what accompanies that, that the bids are all based on is called the design narrative. And it comes from the architect, it's given to the CM for them to bid with. So from 75% to 100%, their contract, their agreement allows for them to note that if there are differences they encounter, they can cost those out. And then that this is essentially what you're seeing now. So the explanation, you can see there's the difference in construction costs. For in this case, with this particular change order, electrical system for the K6 school, the difference between 75% documents and 100% completion or 100% construction documents is the gap that is being requested at this time. So the electrical change order to get from 75% to 100% is $81,046.72. So the GMP was set at 75%. Again, here we are at 100, and there's a gap. There's things that they've identified, mostly switchgear, that was not called out in the original 75% of the design narrative. And they're requesting, of course. And it's just something we need to move on and have the Board consider. Also, in a similar vein, is structural steel at the K6 as well. And again, it's from 75% to 100% and calling out various additions to the structure that were noted by the engineers as the design progressed and as the construction company encountered various constructability needs. And finally, at the K6, a fire pump, which at GMP, we thought wasn't going to be necessary. The calculations were right on the edge of whether you needed this pump or not. For example, at this building out here in front of us, at the 712, we knew we needed it. It's 245,000 square feet. This building was on the edge, maybe could not have to have it, maybe would need it. And as it turned out, as the building was developed and local code officials were consulted, it turned out that the fire pump was needed at the K6. And again, it's safety related, so it's a good thing to have. Just circulates the fire loop water for enough pressure to remain in all the hydrogen sprinkler systems to be active in the case that we're a fire. So it's a good thing to have, but it is $52,000. So you can see that as a change order as well. So that's the K6 at the 712. And again, we were trying to bring all of these to you at once. As I said, this isn't the first time you've seen a CD. Unfortunately, it won't be the last time. With a project of this size, when you're building $107 million worth of facilities, you're going to encounter some of these from time to time, of course. At the 712, another elective that the owner wishes to be sure the building is equipped with is an intrusion system for the 712 school. That's at $65,609.69. And then finally, 712 fireproofing. This was additional fireproofing that was noted to be needed later. And again, it was code official review as the reason for this. Applying intimsit paint, which is a coating you apply to steel to keep it from collapsing under the weight and melting in a fire, essentially, if there were an extreme fire. So it's safety related. Interestingly enough, the CM team has become very creative. And the fireproofing that is in the, what we call the International Plaza, which is the long, again, where you see those pieces of V steel, that's, you could easily run a 40-yard dash inside there. But that whole length of that hallway is now fireproofed above there. Or it's, we are requesting consideration for funding that to be done. And that actually couples with soundproofing. So there's an alternate to soundproof that that we won't need to do if indeed we fireproof as we're being requested. So it's a creative way of looking at something you would pay a lot of money for, for acoustic control that's actually going to provide you with fire protection. Also gives a very good coefficient of noise reduction, sound reduction. So that concludes the list of change orders being requested at this time.
The reason that Mr. Denny has to bring the change orders to you now, Board, is we wanted to make sure that before additional walls were up, these things were already there so that additional labor would not have to take place. So these are preliminary pieces that need to be in place so that the structural part of it can go as scheduled.
Dr. Cupoletti? About $500,011. What does that do to our bottom line?
It's part of why the contingency is spent down to around 40%. So we still have funds remaining in contingency, but yes.
So we're down only 60%?
Correct, correct.
Can we get the motion to approve, and then we'll have questions and discussion? So Board, a motion would be in order to approve the change orders as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the change orders as presented.
All right, thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Now, we can ask some more questions. To Dr. Cupoletti's question, that was going to be my question. So we have not exhausted the contingency amount that's been set aside. We still have funds in there as well. We're just using some of them right now. And from what I see, all of these have to do with safety.
That is correct in this case, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And two questions. On the intrusion detection at each building, is that after hours or during school hours where intruders come in? And how does that benefit the safety of the school overall?
These are all good questions. So both, actually. So after hours, it would act like a burglar alarm system with motion detectors and door contacts. But during the school day, it's incorporated into the BAS or Building Automation System, which on a dashboard will alert you if a door contact is not talking to. So the door contact on the frame and then one on the door, if that is broken, it actually tells the automation system, you've got a door open.
Or if somebody sets it ajar or something like that.
Correct, yes. And it can send text messages to your phone. And I mean, so it's, the system's very robust. And of course, a cracked door is one of the number one security concerns that you have for any school, really any facility, but schools especially. So it functions both during the day and after hours.
This is a strange question too, but these extra protections, will they also translate to maybe lower premiums on our insurance? A lot of times, those kind of things will save us some money.
We already get a discount on our current liability insurance, property casualty. I could foresee that easily being arguable, that the enhanced systems that this building will have could result in lower premiums.
Along with the fireproofing as well?
Fireproofing sprinklers also. That's a question I can never answer yes to now, but under the new conditions with the new buildings, would be a yes.
Okay. I'm just looking for ways to save some money.
Actuaries like that, the underwriters like it.
And then, well, the contingency monies that we're taking out, will it affect monies that maybe we were going to put into place or use that money for other niceties, we'll call, or other ones?
So there's a constant prioritization that's going on. And every week when we meet, we spend a couple hours, and this is one of the number one things we track. We maintain a PCO log or Project Change Order Log, and everything is on there, no matter how big, how small. Even if it's just a request for information, we track all of it. And there's a listing Mr. Smith and I have worked on and stared at where we basically prioritized all the alternates. You may recall, we ran into steel tariffs, we ran into soil issues, we ran into some budgetary, just the volatility of the market. There was so much work out there, it was difficult to make GOP. We made a lot of decisions to place things in an alternate status. Our goal is to buy as many of those as we can at the end of the project or as we go along. The issue is, some of these are time gated, meaning if you don't do it now, you won't get a chance to do it later. So you'll see some of those. So you prioritize not only by cost and need, but also by timing and whether or not you can afford to try to do it later. So there's a lot of complexity to it. The short answer is, there's about $1 million in hard contingency per building. And so you can see between the two what we spent down to. There's also a soft contingency pot. We have to be cautious with that. It helps pay the temporary utilities, like there's natural gas and propane heating these facilities right now. So there's also an LFI pot of money that we have. And then there's finally the interest dollars. So there's actually several safeguards. And if, let's say, heaven forbid, we were to blow through all of those, which I feel very confident will happen, we have builder's risk insurance as well. So the, and then on top of that, there's the GMP, which protects the district. So we have multiple layers of protection. CMR, Construction Manager at Risk, is the safest way to build a high-value facility for the owner.
That's the reason we selected it.
It is the reason. So, and these are great questions, and hopefully this provides some information that's useful.
I think it's very helpful, because I think our parents and families want to have a full appreciation of all, all of the pieces that go into this very big work and appreciate the hard work that you put forth. And you'll become quite the expert, I'm sure.
I don't know about that. It's my pleasure. I appreciate the opportunity.
Mrs. Coon, as, I'm sorry, Ms. Ragless.
So, I wanted to make sure that our listeners are clear that this is, the intrusion detection is an enhancement, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
We didn't forget to put the burglar system.
Yeah, yes.
Because at first I was like, hmm, okay. So, I'm glad to know that that's an enhancement. And if you've been a part of any building, you know that change orders happen. So, as, you know, and it's important to get those enhancements in at the right time of the building. And as you move forward, I know there was a couple of things that we had talked about wanting the want to have and making sure if there's areas where we're saving some money, that we can come back and we can add those enhancements if it's not, you know, impacting us because we are making these high-tech buildings. So, wherever we can do something to help enhance our academics, enhance our music, you know, that will be appreciated. And it looks like you did this with this document, so thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Yes, go ahead. You want to have a statement? Yes. All right. Are there any other questions for discussion? All right, seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Denny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We need to back up now and go to ten point oh two. We just skipped it so that Mr. Denny was already at the podium and that we, you know.
We need to back up one more to.
Say that again, please.
Is it ten point oh one or ten point oh two?
It's ten point oh two.
Personnel?
One, one.
I thought we did one oh one.
Not personnel schedules yet.
Oh, we skipped ten point, okay. I'm sorry. We sure did. My computer is down, so I'm depending on my pieces of paper that I have written on. Okay, thank you. Yes, ten point oh one is the next item. Sorry about that. Superintendent Smith, personnel schedules. So, if you want to tell us about those.
Recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules. Schedule A, resignations. Schedule C, personal employment support staff. Schedule D, personal employment certificated and uncertificated, including extra duties. And I believe the last one would be Schedule E, leaves.
Okay. Board a motion would be in order to approve schedules, personnel schedules A, C, D, and E.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Now to ten point oh two. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. She stood at the ready. We did. Thank you. Ten point oh two is the next item, and this is a second read of the replacement and revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, the recommendation is to approve the second reads. And the first one of the second read that you guys reviewed last month is fifty-six-ten, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. Revised policy fifty-six-ten point zero-three, students, emergency removal of students. Policy sixty-three-twenty, finances, purchasing and bidding. Policy, which is a revised policy, sixty-three-twenty-five, procurement, federal grants. Policy sixty-six-oh-five, which is also a revision, is crowdfunding. Policy seventy-five-fourty point zero-two, property web, accessibility, content, apps, and services. And the final policy for your vote tonight is revised policy eighty-four-hundred, operation, school safety.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the second read, replacement and revised board policies as presented.
A second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Moving right along to eleven point oh one is the next item on the agenda, which is the Board of Education Report and Legislative Report. So, Mrs. Coon, you have the floor as our legislative liaison.
Thank you, Madam President. I've passed out copies of the various work that's being done on the entire legislature. Week by week, it's very helpful to have that information condensed into some light reading, we'll call it, from the OSBA. And they kind of highlight some of the work. There's a lot of activity. I always find it interesting from a side layperson to see all the activity and then nothing's really finished all the way. But they're working. So, I'll let you kind of look through that. They're working a lot of different things. I will do a shout out a little bit to our former, former school board member, Jessica Miranda, who has co-sponsored some legislation and was working very hard on behalf of our community. And it's really nice to be able to see that reach down into our local community that we have a voice up in Columbus. So, that's extremely encouraging to me, and I believe to my board members too. You have, I know you had some ideas.
Yeah, there's a couple that I had, that I was going to call out just because I knew that we were having the discussion on school safety and security. There is House Bill one twenty-three that talks about school safety and security. And it also goes along with youth suicide awareness, education, and training. And that is in our board policy, PO eight-four-zero-zero. And in addition to that, when we're talking about safety and security of the students, House Bill eighty-three talks about bus cameras, not just buses, cameras that are on the bus, but cameras that are outside of the bus. There are an alarming number of cars that are not stopping when the bus puts up the stop sign and they're passing, and there's been a lot of very severe and tragic accidents across Ohio. And now, where they got this statistic from for this House bill, but they said a hundred and eight thousand bus drivers observed eighty-four hundred vehicles illegally passing them in a single day. That is a lot. Now, that was what, part of that House bill and that legislative report. And so, what they're proposing is that possibility of cameras being put on the outside of the bus. Now, here's the thing. If it becomes a law, who's going to pay for it? Right? So, that's what I, that's the reason I'm bringing it, because it may be something that we may need to be considering. Right now, they didn't say how it was going to be paid for. They were saying, we're considering requiring cameras. And we know that there's possibly a need, but it's also something that needs to possibly be on our radar because it also may be another cause to us. The other one thing that I was looking at is, as far as education was concerned, was the lawmakers were, again, looking at the possibility of additional training for students with disabilities that have dyslexia. And again, this is another policy that they're talking about, how they're going to solve that, is possibly additional training for the teachers, additional training for the special education teachers and for all teachers so that they can recognize dyslexia. But they don't say where the what is coming from, where the money for the additional training, professional develop. Now, some of this could maybe happen as a part of regular professional development that would occur in the school anyway. But what level of training they're talking about, again, I was just kind of trying to highlight some things that might occur and require the school district to come up with the money to fund it, you know. So, it's just things that we may want to kind of keep on our radar. So, those are the couple of things that I had, was in addition to that. So, that's our report for the legislative report. Mr. Birdy is not here tonight, so we will not have our Great Oaks Career Center report, which I'm sure that he'll give it to us next month for both months. So, that was eleven point oh two. The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, which is board motions, recommendations. So, I don't have any on my radar for discussion. So, seeing none, does anybody have anything on their radar? Okay, thank you. Seeing that we have none, let's move on to thirteen point oh one. I'm smiling because my computer's been shutting down this whole time. What? I print everything out just in case. It's updating. I just decided to do it during this meeting. The next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, which is the comments from the members of the Board of Education, Superintendent and Treasurer. Dr. Kupuletti, we'll start with you.
Oh, I would just like to wish our students, staff, administrators, and members of the community a healthy and happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kupuletti. Mrs. Ragless?
Yes. One of the things that I would like to do, and I have never done it, is go to the POPS. And I would like for our board to maybe go to the POPS and support our students one day, one of the performances where we can go as a group and hear them. And also, I want to thank Mr. Smith. We had a brief conversation, and you know, he was just sharing some information about safety protocols, and I was surprised to see that, how quickly something went out. What we're seeing on the news is very disturbing. And you know, I've always told my kids from the time they were little to be aware of your surroundings. So, we want to make sure that our students and our parents are thinking about safety because that's something that we think about constantly here in the district. It's getting a little bit too close to home. And as far as the bus, bus safety, a couple, I don't know, earlier last year or sometime, I worked with Ms. Wilson and Mr. Denny and Mr. Smith and partnered with the Springfield Township Police Department. Because it was on my mind just about these buses, you know, coming from where I come from. I was shocked at seeing how many cars blow past school buses. And so, we convened a group together to start talking about what we can do about awareness in the community. And I know Ms. Wilson and Ms. Hooper, they're on a committee with the state and talking about different things about transportation and safety. So, it kind of fell off the radar. But given what's happening across Cincinnati, it might be worth reconvening a small group to talk about what we can do as far as awareness and bus safety in our community before we have a situation. I'd rather us be proactive in doing, doing small things, the big things that can make a difference that keeps our kids safe. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Ragless. Mrs. Coon?
I want to also wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. I kind of have a couple lists of to-dos. I appreciated the coat and hat drive that was being started by our students. They realized the importance of being good community members, how they can make an impact locally, you know, think globally, work locally. And it made me think a little bit about being good citizens and being good citizens in our, in our family. And then it radiates outward to in our classrooms and in our schools and where we live and in the state. We all are, can control ourselves. We can't control other people, but we control how we behave. And if we all set forth good examples and treat each other kindly and compassionately and work together and be considerate, those go a long way in this time of Thanksgiving. So, we can appreciate all that we have, that we've been given. And much has been given to us, so we need to be good stewards of that back to our community. I do want to encourage, another piece of why we're feeling good, go fundraise. The VE is raising money to go on a, on a great opportunity for them to go to New York, to go to Carnegie Hall. I'm sure there's a lot of different ways to pave the way to Carnegie Hall. But one of the ways is a fundraiser that you can help our students get there. It's a great opportunity. We're all about opportunities for our students every day, again, to make them good citizens. And then I also wanted to appreciate Mr. Denny for sharing the picture of what it, what it looks like ripped away with what it really is going to look like, because that helps my imagination. And I think our community would benefit. It would be neat to see that online too and maybe share that to see the realization of it coming to fruition. So, that's exciting. But I appreciate my team here. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all of our administrators and faculty for your hard work, and we give thanks for you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Coon. Mr. Seymour, do you have anything?
Well, Mrs. Ragless asked me to do a couple reviews, so. No, I don't have anything.
Go for it. What did you ask him to do? He's pretty honest.
I asked him to be true to form today.
Oh.
She wanted to hear more about the five-year forecast.
I thought she did. Okay. Mr. Smith, you have anything?
No, I'd just like to read something from our great chief fertileman from Green Hills. He writes, "Crime is afoot in Green Hills during the past month. The Green Hills Police were as well making apprehensions of those responsible. Our officers thwarted a series of thefts, stopped a domestic violence suspect, who had just assaulted a victim and then attempted to run down an officer with his car and apprehended a stolen car suspect and recovered the vehicle. In conjunction with our colleagues from the Forest Park Police Department, we attended a law enforcement accreditation conference and participated in honoring our heroes event in schools. In addition, we attended a coffee with a cop event at the Aloha Center." So, for details of these events, as well as rundown on tips, we're online in-store holiday shopping. And the chief says, "Happy Thanksgiving."
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Just echoing everyone else's sentiments about having a happy Thanksgiving and being very thankful for all the work that you do for our district. Also, just a reminder, there is a breakfast with Santa at the Primary South on Saturday, December the fourteenth.
It's been changed.
Has it been changed?
It's breakfast with the treasurer.
Yeah. That's more fun anyway. You're going to give out color bills?
That's my kind of breakfast.
It's more fun anyway. And then on twelve, December the thirteenth and the fourteenth, I didn't hear anybody mention this, and I have a friend whose daughter's in this, there's a middle school musical that's going to be going on. The, what is it, Cinderella and the substitute stepmom or something? It's something like that, the substitute god mom or something. But anyway, that's on December the thirteenth and the fourteenth. Mr. Smith already mentioned about the band concert. And Mrs. Coon mentioned about the coat and hat drive that's going to be going on pretty much almost the whole month of December when we're in school. Starts like December the second and at each different location. So, also, I did read something about SAT testing, but it wasn't a lot of information out there about it. There's going to be SAT testing, but check with your school counselor to find out the exact date and time. But it is on our calendar, but there was no date and time that was listed there. So, check that out. Also, Mr. Smith mentioned the Springfield Township Winterfest Parade. I believe the parade starts at one o'clock. And there's other festivities that go along with that from noon until like six or seven in the evening. So, if you're an outdoors person, I'm not. But for a parade, I'll be out there for a few minutes, but not from noon until six. But if you are, there are some festivities that you can participate in with the Springfield Township Winterfest that's going on, so.
Breakfast with Santa, December seventh.
December seventh, okay. Yeah, that's the same day as the parade, right? What else is going on there? That's it. Oh, no, well, you got to think of this.
I knew they had breakfast with Santa too on Sunday.
All right, good. Okay. All right. Well, that's, that's all that I have. So, board, I do not believe that there is a need for an executive session, right? So, okay, I guess all minds are clear. So, again, I'd like to thank Wake Cross Community for your service in taping tonight's meeting. And with that said, I want to wish everyone again a happy Thanksgiving as I call this meeting of the Wittenwood City School Board of Education, regular meeting, Monday, November the twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. regular meeting Monday, November the twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, adjourned. Thank you. Stay safe, stay warm, and have a wonderful evening.